Okay, folks, I see by the clock on the wall it's seven o'clock. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, November 19, 2024, meeting of the mound planning commission. This is a special slash rescheduled meeting. You should have an agenda and attachments that were faithfully submitted to you by Sarah. And I'd like to now have roll call for this.
Commission member Young.
Here.
Commission member Rosner.
Here.
Commission member Baker.
Here.
Commission member Heel.
Here.
Commission member Wecker.
Here.
City council liaison, planning commission member Meckanini.
Here.
Boy, she doesn't have a memory.
Planning commission member Arsha Boat. Chair Good.
I'm here.
Sorry, Chair.
I'm here.
Okay. There is not really an amendment to the agenda. The name under planning case 2416 is spelled T-I-G-H-E. The E got left off of your agenda. I do believe the name is spelled correctly on the attachments. Okay, with that said, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Motion to move the agenda as distributed?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. Motion carries. Moving on, number four. Approval of meeting minutes. This would be approval of the October 1, 2024 regular meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as distributed unless anyone has any changes they'd like to offer.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. Motion carries. Order of adjustments and appeals. We have planning case number 24-16. Review slash recommendation, variance for house slash additions project 3118 Drury Lane. Application Mark Ty Kria and Susan Kria-Ty. Did I get it right?
You did, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am actually just doing an introduction. Behind me is one of my staff, my colleague Mia. She is going to actually do the presentation tonight. You guys are nice people, so it felt like a good place for her to start. Her presenting on planning commission cases. So she's the one that prepared the report with obviously Sarah and I being the instigators on reviewing and making changes. But we wanted to give her a chance. She's been with HKGI for, since February. Got it right. February. So I wanted a chance for her to get out, and I need also to have someone else that can be my backup here and get to know the community. So she'll be presenting both cases this evening. So I know you'll be great and she'll be great, but I just want to explain kind of what's happening. So it's all yours.
And you can review the minutes.
Thank you. As Rena said, I'm Mia. I'll be presenting the two cases tonight. So the first case, as you introduced, is for 3118 Drury Lane, a variance for a house renovation and addition. The lot is located at the corner of Drury Lane and Hampton Road. It is a corner lot, currently a single-family home built in 1938 along with a detached The request is for a variance of 11.4 feet in the front yard setback to allow for a reconstruction of the living room, moving the front entrance, which is currently located on the side, to the front, and for the addition of a front porch. The project also includes an expansion on the second floor and a mudroom on the rear of the house. These are conforming. The lot is guided as low-density residential in the comprehensive plan. This will continue the use as a single-family home on this property. It is also zoned in R1, single-family residential. It is considered a lot of record, which means that the front yard setback has been determined to be 30 feet. This is based on the lot depth. And the interior side yard setback, which is the east property line, has been determined to be 10 feet. This is based on the lot width. And the rear yard setback is 15 feet. So the proposed addition is on this lot that's 31,503 square feet. The current front yard setback of the house is 25.8 feet. This is non-conforming already. And the proposed front porch setback would be 18.6 feet. So that's the variance of 11.4 there. Another note is that on-grade walks and steps are allowed to be encroaching in the setback as long as they are not wider than six feet. The maximum hardcover on a lot of record is 40%. With the addition, the applicant is proposing a total of 33.5% hardcover on the lot. Additionally, eaves are allowed to encroach two feet into the setback. So the existing site conditions, the house, as was mentioned, was constructed in the 1930s. The front lot line is at an angle to the house, and this results in the western corner being a lot closer to the lot line than the eastern corner of the house. Currently, although the western corner of the house is non-conforming, the eastern corner is, does meet that 30-foot setback. Due to the lot configuration, there is limited space to reconfigure the existing front of the home on the lot. The application was distributed to, or notice was distributed to adjacent property owners, staff, consultants, agencies, utilities. The city engineer responded with no engineering concerns, and other than that, there were no other comments. So it is, we are asking you as planning commission to discuss this request and then take one of the following actions of tabling the request to ask for additional information, recommending approval with conditions, or recommending denial stating the finding of fact. So, thank you.
Okay. Questions for Mia.
Mia, is there a staff recommendation for the case?
Yes, we are recommending approval.
So it said that the road was changed at some point after it was built. Do you know how the road was changed before? Was it more curved so that it was actually more facing the road before? Do we know?
That was something the applicant stated. But Sarah, I know researched and couldn't find any evidence of that, so we didn't put any official information about that because we don't know.
Okay.
I think it was widened from when I was told by previous owners. And then the retaining wall, too, right out from your house.
We can ask you later when you come up if you want.
Oh.
That's okay.
I didn't realize.
That's fine. Okay, other discussion on this proposal. Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And would the applicants like to come forward and address the commission? We would appreciate your names and your address.
Yeah, it's Susan Kria-Ty. It's 3118 Drury Lane in Mound. And would you like me to speak further?
Absolutely. Go ahead and offer whatever thoughts you have.
Okay, no, just, I think, I think basically that road was widened way after the whole house was initially built. And then, as you can see, it's, the way the house is situated on the lot, it's at a really wonky angle. And one corner of the house is within the setback, no problem. And then the, this corner is, is within a little bit. But in order for us to move the front door, the front door and the back door are currently both on the same side of the house, which is the side of the house. Very confusing. So we want to move the front door to the front of the house facing the street where I think it belongs. And then because there's no entryway inside, we want to add a little front porch, not a big one to the outside, so there's a little roof over your head when you, when you walk in, you know, to the living room area, like a little buffer. So, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you. Question, well, hang on. Questions for the applicants. Okay, hearing none. Thank you for coming forward.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we've heard Mia, we've heard the applicants. We've had a little bit of discussion. Any further discussion on planning case 24-16? Hearing none, I know that on page seven of the agenda materials, there is a recommendation from staff to ask us to recommend approval to the city council, planning case 2416, with four, four conditions and three findings of fact. Chair would entertain a motion.
Can I just ask, Ms. Mia, we're just talking about the westernmost kind of corner of that front addition would be the only piece that's not conforming, right?
Yeah, the porch, the setback isn't on there for the eastern side, but the western side would be the non-conforming piece.
It's just the portion.
Just the front portion of that porch.
And it's just that westernmost, like, quarter of the addition, or third or thereabouts, right?
Yeah. And, and the current house is currently not conforming there.
Well, the whole, the whole western part of the porch, right?
Yeah.
Because the house is already not conforming.
We're expanding the non-conformity, aren't we? And so the rationale for, for approving this would be that with the, the angle combined with the fact that it was already non-conforming, combined with the fact that we think it might be reasonable that a front door should be facing and a porch would be reasonable there, that that would be a reason why we would approve the variance. Is that sounding right? That the, the practical difficulty of the angle of the road and the existing non-conformity, is that sounding right?
That is sounding right to me, yeah.
I would agree.
Sounds right.
I don't see any issues with that. It seems pretty straightforward and commonsensical to me.
You do.
I would agree. I would make a motion then that the, if the Chair would entertain a motion.
I do.
That the planning commission recommend approval of the request based on the proposed findings of facts provided by staff, which I didn't bother to have in front of me when I made my motion.
There were four conditions and three findings of fact.
As well as the proposed conditions.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to second. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. Motion carries. Folks, my notes say that this will go to the city council November 26 with an alternate date of December 10, and I'm sure Sarah will keep in touch with you regarding which meeting. And I also want to point out, but she's probably already told you, the planning commission is a recommending body to the city council. City council's actions are final, okay? All right, thank you for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay for the rest of this if you'd like.
Thanks so much.
Okay, moving on. Planning case 24-17, we have a request for a variance for a new detached garage and accessory structure at 2503 Lost Lake Road. Applicants Patrick and Rebecca Horgan. Ms. Mia, rock and roll.
Thank you. So this site is located along Lost Lake Road. It is a lot of record. Currently, there's a single-family home with an attached two-car garage at this property. There's also a public park, Lost Lake Park, that sits between the property and the lake shore of Lost Lake. The request is for a 26-foot by 36-foot side-loaded detached accessory garage. This is 936 square feet on the south side of the property. And the applicant is requesting a 12-foot setback from the front property line abutting Lost Lake Road for this detached garage. This lot is guided as low-density residential in the comprehensive plan and will continue its use as a single-family house on that property. It is also zoned in the R1, single-family residential district, considered a lot of record. And because it is in the R1 district, the setbacks for an accessory structure are 20 feet in the front yard, four feet in the rear yard, and then four feet in the side yard, when it's the side yard of the house, and six feet in the side yard when it's in the rear portion of the yard. So this lot is a little interesting. It looks like it should be a lakeshore lot, which is defined as a lot abutting public waters or abutting public lands abutting public waters, with the exception of designated parks. So because Lost Lake Park sits between this property and Lost Lake, it is considered R1 residential rather than a lakeshore property. And so the proposed garage is 936 square feet. This is below the maximum of 1,200 square feet for an individual accessory structure. The required setbacks are 20 feet in the front wrap, front yard, and four feet in the rear yard. And the proposed garage is at 12 feet in the southeast corner, which means they are asking for a variance of eight feet from the front yard setback. If this were a lakeshore lot, the front yard setback would be eight feet for a side-loaded garage, which means the opening of the garage is facing the house rather than the front property line there. And so this proposed structure would be conforming on a lakeshore lot. The maximum hardcover is 40% because it is a lot of record. The proposed addition will mean a total of 33.46% for the whole lot. This is under the 40%. Minimum elevation at, on Lake Minnetonka for new structures is 933 feet. This garage is at 938.7 feet, so it meets the minimum flood elevation. Another thing to note is the southern portion of the lot, which is here, is a drainage and utility easement, and so is limited in that way.
It's limited in that way? What does that mean, it's limited in that way?
It just has the designation of being an easement.
Okay.
So you can't build on it.
No, yeah. And so while the house and this lot is technically not a lakeshore lot due to the presence of Lost Lake Park, it does have the appearance of being a lakeshore lot. And the application of lakeshore front yard setbacks for the side-loaded garage is in keeping with character for other lakeshore properties. The notice was distributed to property owners, staff, consultants, agencies, and private utilities. We received no comments. And now we would ask that you guys discuss the request for this eight-foot variance in the front yard setback and take one of the three actions. And staff does recommend approval of this variance.
Okay, questions for Mia? Okay, hearing none. Discussion amongst the commission. And then I'll get them. Okay, why don't we then see if Patrick and Rebecca Horgan would like to come forward and speak to their project? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Horgan.
Patrick Horgan, 2503 Lost Lake Road.
Thank you.
We just want a garage. You know, the rear setback with the zoning, with us not being lakeshore, we have four feet, but we can't, we're in low floor elevation if we did that. So this was the most logical place for us to put it.
It's quite a break.
It goes down.
Going towards the park.
And then the whole, the picture's not up, but the whole, this whole easement, the drainage is, we can't build on that, we can't use that. So this was level, less backfill, less excavating, less, I mean, it just seemed, and we could use our existing driveway instead of building more driveway.
Which is newer driveway, actually.
Well, in 2018, we put that in, so.
Yeah, I guess my only question was, did you ever look at, if you could turn it, like, so it's almost parallel to the road, so?
Well, we looked at it attached.
No, no, I mean, just.
Oh, parallel to the.
Just rotate it a little bit to the right and push it back so it was, it was the 20 feet from the road?
But then we have a weird getting into it.
Well, it would be angled more towards the driveway. That's what I was just curious.
You mean, just like?
If you just rotated a little bit clockwise.
Does it, does it need to be squared to the house, or that can't be angled?
Yes, it can be angled, yeah.
Okay.
But then wouldn't we be closer to the low floor elevation, though? Because it starts, there's a hill that goes down.
Okay.
In the back corner.
I was just curious if you looked at that as an option to get it further away from the street?
We, we didn't because of the hill going down, and it was, and it's closer to the drainage down there. There's a spring that comes across the road from our neighbors, and there are water pumps going 24/7. And we have, you can't see it, but there's like a marsh in there of trees and water. And it just, I guess, I didn't think of it because of the elevation.
To me, it'd be easier to get in and out of that garage, too, if it was slightly angled towards your driveway more, especially with boats and trailers. But I guess, I'm okay either way. I was just curious if you actually looked at it like that to make it more parallel to the street and kind of just slightly angled.
I guess we wanted to kind of save some backyard, too. I, I don't know. No, I didn't think of that with the hill going down. I just didn't want a big block wall off the back because of that hill either.
Yeah.
Because then we'd have to dig down lower, because it gets, I would assume, the closer to the water, it's probably going to need more frost, what's that called?
Yeah, we'll have to be deeper. The further we go west.
Yeah.
It breaks off, and I know there's, from reports of that neighborhood, there, we could run into soil issues anyway, so.
Not where it is. We could turn it a little bit.
Less likely there, but where it kind of breaks off, it's, like, 14, the water travels pretty far up into the park.
Not by our house, though.
No, but.
I don't.
We've got some distance.
We didn't consider turning it.
Yeah.
I just, the hill goes down, and I just didn't think of, it's all level where it is, and it's, and it's all 938 for elevation, and it's flat up there.
And we were trying to be square with the driveway that was existing, too, because I think there's just enough room to, when it comes to excavation along that driveway edge there, when we pull that back, the damage done from digging and doing foundation work, I think, will almost fall within an apron, and the apron, and we could replace the tar that's taken up with possibly just an apron, maybe a foot bigger than normal instead of three to four feet. We might be five feet of the driveway. So we may not have to have any tar put down after it's done.
Okay, further questions for the applicants? Further comments from the applicants? Okay, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion within the commission?
I'm okay with either way. I like the fact that they got all their neighbors to sign off.
Okay, hearing, nothing else?
Nope.
You will note on page 31 of your agenda that staff recommends, that the planning commission recommend approval of the requested front yard variance with five conditions and three findings of fact. Chair would entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the variance for the new detached garage accessory structure for planning case 2417, including the five conditions and three findings of fact on page 31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. Motion carries. And again, it's either November 26 or December 10 for the city council meeting, and Sarah will be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Okay, moving on. We have review and discussion of proposed amendments, city code, chapter 119 signage. This is continued from October 1, 2024. Ms. Rena.
All right.
Incidentally, good job, Mia.
Thanks for no trick questions. You can reserve them for now. All right, I'm just getting to it in case you, we want to talk about it, because I didn't do a presentation, because code language is hard to put on a presentation. So, good evening, sorry I wasn't with you last month when we were talking about this. Thanks for tabling it so I can be here and be part of the discussion. I did read the minutes, and I know Mr. Baker had two points that I've already corrected, which was alphabetical.
It's not in this draft, though.
What?
Their, his corrections are not in this draft.
They are not in this draft, thank you. I made the corrections in my draft, and then Sarah said she was just going to reuse the packet. So I already made them, so yours don't show up. But I did correct those, too. So to circle back, we are still working through code updates, and we will continue to work through code updates. This is one more section that we can be reasonably ready to have a conversation about and explore with you. This code update is really important because we did change the districts a few years ago, and the code, sign code lives outside of the districts and had not been updated. So Sarah and I have had fun over the last few years applying sign regulations in districts that don't exist anymore and figuring out how to handle it. So we would really like to work through the signage with you so that we can get a sign code that actually matches the districts that we have. It's a lot easier for everybody. We also are interested in doing the update because there was a change a number of years ago now that does regulate how we can talk about signage and how the city can regulate it. It's not my favorite federal case law, but it is the case law that we are under, and so there are some things that get rather confusing to regulate particularly related to temporary signage. I think permanent signage is pretty easy. You do it by district. We say we want certain wall signs, that's pretty easy. It's all those temporary signs that get a little bit messy. When you can't say, we want to treat garage sale signs different than real estate signs, different than the commercial business signs, they all have to be treated the same in terms of, they have to be treated based on their size, their type, their location. We can't be regulating them based on what they say, which is a lot easier before that law was in place, but that is the rule of the land now. So that's why we have the changes in front of you. Another element that we added was dynamic sign display. The city historically has not really allowed them, other than for time, temperature. We started to do it, but technically the code didn't allow it. But I think we've come a long way with understanding how those affect drivers. I know when I first started my career, people were very, very concerned about it. I think we all have gotten used to it and probably don't have the same level of concern. So we do have regulations added for dynamic displays that are based on other places that we have been working. So structurally, the, you probably haven't spent a lot of time in the sign code. We generally don't talk to you about signage very often, partly because people usually follow the rules and we don't need that many variances. I know I've seen maybe a handful of times in front of the planning commission, more related to, I think, some of the shopping centers and how their signage has. And I did add some information that says, how do we computate sign area? Because I know one of the times that I was in front of you, I think we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how we do sign computations, so that's added in here to hopefully make our lives easier. But the sign organ, this has been organized by purpose and then definitions because that's an important part, kind of general provisions for everybody. How do we calculate signs, you know, what kinds of things do we look for? Then we have a list of prohibited signs. Exempt signs, and that is also a change, is signage can take a lot of time, a lot of staff time to manage. Many cities, as we've had this change in law, have tried to simplify it down because it just could take a lot, a lot of staff time, and it just, we don't necessarily have the staff to do that. So we have exempt signs, meaning signs that you can put you can put up, as long as you meet those standards, you can have them, staff doesn't need to have a conversation about it. Um, temporary signs, uh, again, these, we have a grouping that are exempted from permits, so as long as you meet those standards, you can do that signage. Um, and then we did have, um, just permits related to, um, the public event kind of portable signage, uh, we have a little bit of rules about that. Um, but then we have a few non-exempt temporary signs, we try to limit those just because of the time it can take to give permits, monitor permits, um, and then we have the whole section on permanent signs. So, from staff's perspective, we would love extra feedback. Um, we have, the changes that we made are more related to simplification.
Organization.
Organization. In terms of actual sign sizes, you know, should it be fifty square feet or thirty-two square feet? I tried not to touch that because I, there's no place I can tell you that thirty-two square feet is better than thirty-six square feet, is better than fifty. So if you guys haven't been bothered by signage in the community, it's better to keep those numbers the way they are. Um, and I'm more looking at trying to make things administratively easier, clearer for folks, and to actually have rules that we can point to when someone wants a sign. Um, we did have, um, shoot, comprehen, no, yours were called comprehensive sign plans?
Comprehensive sign plans.
Okay, I was, I was gonna say that, and I second guessed it myself. And we did try and go away from those because those are cumbersome as well, meaning if you want to put a sign up and it meets the district standards, we should just let it go and not have to have a comprehensive sign plan that needs to be reviewed and approved every time someone wants to make a change. Again, it's the idea of adding process and time, and if we've all agreed to the rules, then hopefully we can just go with it. If someone has a planning development, and they include signage information, that we will approve that still as part of the PUD. Historically, the last five years or so, no one's been ready to talk about signage when they come in for approvals, so the conversations have happened afterwards, but we could always do it if someone really knew what they wanted. We can wrap those up in the approvals, but that hasn't happened in recent memory in reviewing the projects that we've had, it's always something that we talk about after. They might show us where it might be, um, but they don't actually have the dimensions at that point, that's early in the process. So, that was a lot of introduction with no slides, which is probably kind of surprised, more, I had more to say than I thought. What questions do you have, what concerns do you have, are there things that you want to walk through? That we should talk about more?
Well, my question is, how, how big of a problem is signage? I mean, do you, it sounds like administratively, you spend a lot of time on it?
Hmm.
I mean, do we have a lot of complaints?
If we have a lot of permits, you'd have to issue.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
I think the biggest concern I've heard from Sarah is, and I don't know that there's been an issue, is just how many temporary pop-up signs that we have to, I mean, those are the hardest ones, they pop up different places, and so try to make sure our code is tight so that the city can go back and enforce it.
And for an example, a temporary sign meaning, uh, garage sale?
Garage sale sign could be signs, uh, typically what you're more concerned about are people that leave them up all the time, like, they put up the sign and they never come back and take it down. Or a new business in some, someplace that wants to have signage, and they put it up and they do a whole bunch of signage. Um, because it used to be your code said you couldn't do that. It's really hard for me to write it so that you can't do that, because again, you'd have to read the content to know it's a business sign instead of a garage sale sign, so those things are a little bit tough, so.
Well, you know, one example, right, this time of year are all the signs for, um, light installation, you know, Christmas tree lights? And at this point, anybody can plop them anywhere, is that?
No, because you still, the current rules you have are a little bit more, uh, specific, but then you need someone to go out and enforce that.
Yeah, I, I'm not complaining, I'm just trying to understand.
Example.
That would be like a seasonal sign.
Uh-huh.
Is what our code would call that.
Okay.
Banner, temporary banners for special events, special activities, this time of the year, they're, they're all over, or they're, they're just prevalent because there's a lot of things going on, and that requires a temporary permit, there's a process, but some get ahead of us, and they, they go up and come down sometimes even before we see them. I'm not suggesting that that's a bad thing, it's just that it, it appears that maybe it can be regulated without a permitting process and still allow, and still work. That seems to be a reasonable, a reasonable thing, but, um, when, the one thing I think we find is, if a sign off-premise advertising sign, we'll, we'll call that, you know, Sarah's Saddle Shop. Uh, Sarah's Saddle Shop gets a sign in the right of way or on public property, and like a rabbit, in five days, there are Tim's Tinkerbell studios and Pat's Playtime Area, because where one is, there's a zillion, and that, that's.
We were all waiting for all the business places you were gonna come.
I'm not that clever.
You were doing pretty good, I was excited to see the list. Mr. Good?
Is there something in here about, um, timeframe within which to remove temporary signs?
Yes, well, there's a sign, a number of times that you can use said sign, a number of days it can be up. And it depends which kind, boy, it's really hard to read when you have the lights off on this. Yes, there are some.
People are pretty good about removing garage sale signs.
For the most part.
People are not very good about removing political signs.
Yeah, so political signs are a whole different thing that are covered by state statute, and we have a reference to that, but those are protected under free speech, and they're under a whole different class of signage, so our code can't regulate it different than the state law relative to political signs.
So.
Just as an FYI.
I'll ask it a little differently, because in the, in the definition, it says temporary sign means any sign intended to be displayed for a short period of time.
Yes.
But what is the definition of a short period of time? Is that three years?
So, the way that we have it working is, um, for example, this first grouping is some, that's signs that are, um, if a property is for sale or for rent, we say that you can have a sign up until it's rented or sold, and then the sign has to come down, so that's that first section, this is under exempt temporary signs. Um, similarly, if you have an open building permit, you can have a sign until it's ninety percent completed, sold, something along those lines.
That's construction.
Those are construction type ones. Then we move on to temporary banners, pennants, and ground banner signs, and that is a thirty-day time window. So my only comment on that is, I don't have a better suggestion, this is very typical of what communities do, recognize that if you have a thirty-day window, that thirty days really starts from the time the complaint is issued, because you can't, you can't know when it first was up, and so the first time you can count is when you know there's a problem, and then it's thirty days plus that. Um, but, I just wanted to note that. And then temporary off-premise freestanding signs, so just to make sure we are clear about what off-premise means, it means not on your property, so you're putting a sign on someone else's property, that's like a garage sale sign, you don't put the garage sale sign in front, on your house. You put the garage sale sign on the corner. You might.
You might, yeah.
Generally, the ones we're talking about, the ones that are down the street at the corner directing.
Pointing.
Yes, um, so these, we say they can be have, you can have them five days, five occasions per year, five days per occurrence, this is more of a enforcement kind of thing, there are, obviously, you're not gonna register all of the garage sales on a, and do that. What typically happens with this one is that the kinds of folks that have a garage sale on a weekly basis, eventually the neighbors get frustrated, and they say it, and then five times in, then you can start doing it, and then they're on the list. Um, having, you know, just knowledge from other places, that's kind of how that one goes. Um, I have, let's see, can we keep going? So these all have, the, kind of the idea is, they all have different timelines, they don't all have the same timeline, because they're related to very specific purposes.
And it's, how is a garage sale sign not a Section Four sign, a temporary banner, is it because it's off-premise?
Oh, how come it's not a temporary banner?
Well, it has a thirty day.
So banners, pennants, and ground banner signs are very specifically defined, so a banner is going to be on a structure. A temporary, a ground banner sign are kind of like those newish feather ones that kind of wave.
Banner.
I see.
So they're based on the type, so we can, we can regulate based on type and location and size, and so that's how they differentiate, so. Um, the off-premise freestanding sign can only be four square feet in area, which means it's likely gonna be a square sign that's four square feet. Uh, I did see, and Sarah and I did talk about it, and I didn't add this in, one, one thing I've seen with temporary off-premise freestanding signs, um, I have seen a few ci, cities, um, because Sarah, I think, is the most concerned about that one, so I, I looked around, I mean, rightfully. Uh, I had seen a couple of places that did it where they're only allowed to be placed between Thursday and Sunday, or Thursday and Monday, so it limited it at least to the weekend, which is the assumption that it's mostly garage sale signs, so that is something that could be added, that wouldn't work for a business, though, if they wanted to, like, the the lighting, now, these again are off-premise, meaning if you have one on your property for the person that put up your lights, they are different, these are ones that are, someone put it up and they didn't ask your permission, and they're in the right of way.
And the holiday boutiques, you know, those are everywhere, those would fall under this category?
Yes, if they're, if they're those four square feet signs.
Yeah.
Because they follow the garage sale signs now, which are allowed.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I want to go one more down.
And those are essentially allowed in the public right of way, but only in private property with permission of the property owners, is that sounding right?
Say one more time, I was looking for something and got distracted.
So it's, we're only concerned with things that are in the garage sale sign, for example, that are in the public right of way?
Or your neighbor's property, it could be on your neighbor's property.
Permission.
Technically, I, yeah, nobody, yes.
Okay.
But, in your, you could be on your neighbor's property, but you should have the permission to do that. And then we do have temporary freestanding signs specific for, um, non-residential districts, and those are a little bit bigger. Um, but those have permits, so they're gonna have a start and a stop, and they're big, they're thirty-two square feet, so we left that to provide businesses some more options that they could do, but again, those are gonna be on their properties. Did that answer, Mr. Baker, you were the one that I, I went long on your answer?
I'm gonna say yeah.
Okay.
So the temporary freestanding and the residential, is that also gonna cover real estate signs, too?
Well, the real estate signs are here, they are, if they're, are you talking the open house signs, or are you talking the ones on your property?
Um, the ones on your property.
Those are covered by a different section, and that's, uh, just a second, this one, three, so. Oh, that's a, uh, that's not the one.
Is it the one above it? Temporary freestanding, that's what we're calling that one?
Yeah, freestanding wall window sign, that's, so that's your real estate sign.
Okay.
And you can have it both on the lakeside and on the street side.
Yeah.
So as much as we can, we take the language you, we already had in the code, moved it around, and then made it meet the content neutral, that's that terminology, content neutral, meaning we don't talk about content, we talk about something else to regulate it.
We regulate signs in business windows?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Uh-huh, what about private homes?
Hmm, I mean, they're not specifically, depends on how big they would be. Um, there is a provision that allows you a little bit. So, window signs are part of the exempt signs category for a business, and they have to be placed within the building and not exceeding fifty percent of the window area.
But that doesn't, I don't think that would extend to residential home.
Correct, well, she, I think she asked about business first.
Okay.
But yes, you're right, that doesn't extend to window, uh, residential homes. For residential homes, we really just have the property identification signs that are two square feet or less. So that's, that's just your numbers. We're generally aren't going to get into the happy birthdays and all those kinds of things, hopefully those are temporary, if someone has those. Are you concerned about a specific example of that?
No.
Okay, just checking, because we can usually regulate stuff.
Managed communities typically have no signs, period. No real estate signs, nothing.
This is probably just more academic than anything, but curiosity, the code says prohibited sign, motion signs are prohibited, so are traditional barber shop tools permitted, or is there?
Oh, I mean, this is what your code already said?
Okay.
Is that why we don't have any of those here? There's one by the hardware store.
Existing one, right?
No, I don't know. I hadn't got, no, no, I understood what you were saying, I, I technically, I suppose. The only thing about the motion is it's inside the
Glass.
The glass, it's not a whirly that someone might get hit by, or totally, it's in, I don't know.
Okay.
It's a good point, that is an academic type of question.
Real quick, except for on subsection H on there, I think you're missing something.
I know, I, I caught that yesterday, so, but thank you, I was actually going back to make sure I did it again.
Okay.
But when I was updating for your, the things you had mentioned last month, I had noticed that and thought, oh, it got dropped off.
One nineteen dash.
Dash what?
Yeah. I'm sure it's there, it's probably in that track changes, where it got in the track changes cut. Yeah, it's or I didn't know where portable signs ended up yet, but now I do, thank you for saying that.
So one thing I'm having a hard time tracking is, what is now newly allowed without permit?
Ooh. That is a better Sarah question, because I don't actually.
What is allowed without a permit?
What is, in these proposed changes?
So what has changed from needing a permit to not needing a permit with these regulations? Because I know we intentionally moved to not needing a permit for most things. What would you have to issue a permit for today, that you won't have to after this?
What will I?
Yes, what would you have to issue a permit for?
That you do today.
How are we making your life easier?
Um, no banner permits.
Correct.
That's the first one. And did we eliminate the permit for portable signs?
I was just gonna look, actually, that's funny, I believe we did.
Yeah, so that, those are only allowed, those don't, don't have a fee, and they're only allowed for quasi-government and government agencies, I think, and type of relate, type things, and that permit would go away as well.
I think the sandwich boards used to, too.
We, we do, I don't know that we have been, we.
It was in the code, but you haven't been issuing.
I, I don't, I don't know that they've been, if that's been ongoing. We don't have that many of them, but that, but they certainly, um, like those.
On the, the banner, is, is that the same thing where like, if Tour de Tonka wants to advertise, they would advertise across the street, and they still do have to get a permit, or they won't?
That one, they, that would be wrapped up in their, they have to get multiple permits from the city, and that is normally included as part of that.
Sure.
Um.
But that would not be made a temporary not permit required sign?
No, that one, they would, that would be wrapped up into their, their approval for their public gathering permit as, as part of that, I would understand, I think.
Didn't you just say that we're not approving banners anymore?
That is the plan, yes, but that one would be wrapped up with.
That's a portable sign, not a banner.
That's a portable sign, not a banner.
The one, what she's talking about is a portable sign.
Which, which one am I talking about?
Portable sign, that's the one that's quasi-governmental stuff.
No, I was just talking about, I was talking about the over-the-road.
Banners.
Banners.
Because to me, there's like, an over-the-road banner is something I might want to bring, bring to approval, but I don't, I don't feel very strongly about that, but it feels more weighty, but.
I think that how we've had, how we've handled those in the past is they get addressed with the public gathering permit.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think.
But it, so.
But not, not all the time, I don't think.
Well, there's three of them.
Because you're putting a big sign up over the road.
Incredible festival, the fire department.
Yeah.
And Tour de France.
Yeah.
Sometimes. People up there.
And then also Spirit of the Lakes.
Yeah.
But this wouldn't allow them to do that without approval now? Would our code change?
They couldn't put a banner across the road without having an approval for a public gathering, that's what you're saying, correct?
That's what I'm asking. They couldn't use a temporary sign.
Those are the only ones that, that have gotten those approvals in the past.
Can somebody just put one up if they wanted to? No, I mean, technically with this, you can, you can just, I have to, I have to rewrite that to write that in. We don't have, I don't have temporary banners across signs covered in here, I have portable signs covered, because the other ones are are ones on buildings and other things.
As well.
Say what?
They have to get permission from the county as well.
Oh, because it's going across the road?
Going across the road, and then our, our forces normally help them, so that's where their approval comes from.
And when those come through the city council, everything is identified within their permit that they're getting, including the signage.
It's gonna be their signage, they're proposing X or Y, and it's, it's the big events, it's the fire department, it's Tour de Tonka.
I think this section will modify to cover that, but what we wrote it to be was a portable sign for government purposes, quasi-public event, or a special event permit, like, that's the only three times you can do those things, and the special event permit process is where you wrap everything together and the council approves it. So it doesn't allow just any resident or business, it has to have a government or event type of function that we already know about. But I don't, I that we already know about, but I don't, I would say that this doesn't include the temporary banner, so I'll just add that in, cause the other temporary banners is more like grand opening on a building or something smaller, not a road one.
You're right, the content agnostic, it really makes it difficult.
It does, it's really hard. It's, yes, and the, and the original court case was kind of interesting, but neither here nor there, got decided.
So that, when you have those big signs that are like ten feet wide, have the two poles, is that a banner then?
What?
Like, where the heads like?
Our Lady of the Lake.
Oh, those, like for an event?
Is that a banner?
Yeah, for events and things like that.
Is that what you're calling, or what do you call that, where it's like a ten-foot big huge wide sign that says incredible festival?
I hadn't, I, in my head, that's not, I wasn't envisioning those, so I didn't know that they were doing those, so I'll have to look at that.
Well, they are doing it.
Well, they're like by the cemetery or, you know, as you come into town, there's usually posted fish fry.
Yeah, well, when I think of a banner...
I'm not talking about across the road, I'm just...
No.
I think those are banners.
I would say those are banners, but I think we need to be more, be specific, I mean.
Banners on poles versus banners on fences.
We just, we just need to be more specific, cause that's not accounted for.
And I guess in here, banners and pendants are temporary signs which resemble flags, I don't think they all resemble flags.
Right, that's why we need to clean up, well, for the one you just gave me, I didn't realize that that's a flag.
Yeah, we might want to stand that a bit, it's a good catch.
Yep.
Okay, further comments for Rita?
I have kind of a, it wouldn't, yeah, under the prohibited sign section B, where we talk about motion signs and similar devices, um, example of a similar device for a motion sign, I mean, I know we talked about the barber shop thing, but I, one thing that I'm thinking of, um, and I know it's probably not in here, and maybe we don't care about it because it's more tied to residential areas, but you get people who get, I mean, I'm gonna sound like a Debbie Downer right now, but overzealous, um, around the holidays, I'm overzealous around the holidays, but I have seen people who have those lights that just like shine all over the place, and they're spinning around, nine, nine times out of ten, they're hitting the side of the house, and it's a little bat flying, or a pumpkin, and a Christmas tree, but every now and then I see one that's a little more wild and not hitting their house and going into what would be the street, so it's, it's a motion item.
Oh, are these projections, are you talking about?
Yeah, yeah, and a projection really isn't a sign, but, and again, nine times out of ten, it's on a house, but every now and then I see like a disco ball one that's like flickering all over the place, and again, I get enthusiastic about things too, I have a dragon that lights up, you know, but he faces the house, I mean, I'm telling you, I'm not, I'm not trying to call the kettle black here, but I'm trying to think of something that me or my husband might think about putting up, but you know what I mean, I've seen those, I don't know how they get categorized, they usually fall in residential areas, but I have seen it where it shines outward, so I'm just trying to think.
No, I was, I was, my face, I'm like processing, cause I, I remember another signage discussion in another community where, I mean...
Where there was a Debbie Downer who didn't want to have disco balls.
No, no, not a Debbie Downer, but like you start like naming things, and you're like, wow, yeah, we should really, shouldn't we?
I mean, is it a sign, is it a motion device, what would you call it?
We had a whole long discussion about the holiday, or the happy birthdays that you might put in your yard, and whether or not you're allowed as a resident, put happy birthday, happy fifth birthday, and whether we had to regulate those or exempt those, it was a whole long discussion.
And the only reason why I think about it is...
That's how you get down to these things.
If there was something overly obnoxious.
Yeah.
And it's related to a holiday, it could be out there for thirty days.
Right, no, I think that's really good, it's probably related to lighting more than it's related to signage, but it comes, you think of it because of signage, totally good.
Right.
And that's what I think Sarah was saying too, like, it might, if we think that that has been an issue.
Right.
It's always good to put it in, if it hasn't been an issue, you could wait until...
I don't believe it is, cause I think the house where I've seen it happen, they recently sold it, so I don't think it's gonna go back up.
It'll be in a new neighborhood.
I mean, hopefully, if there's a concern about it, then if people knew, like if, if the city knew about it, they could nicely go and ask for adjustments to it, they wouldn't have to have regulation, but I, that's why we're here, is cause we have to have regulations.
Well, I think, I mean, first off, I think going through all of this content is a little dry, it's not horrible, um, I said I had to get my homework on signs, cause I learned a lot, I think the way you cleaned it up is nice, um, is there going to be any communication going out to residents, what, once this is cleaned up, so that again, they understand what sign rules are?
I think we'll probably put together...
Yeah, we could do that.
Newsletter or something?
Yeah, newsletter.
Maybe in the newsletter.
On the Facebook, on the city, city page, on Facebook, or on the website.
Newsletter maybe.
That's really all I have to say, disco ball lights and external communication.
So, I, I, I've curious folks thought, I, I'm reading, uh, one nineteen four, section C about painted signs, and there's two, there's two rationales about this that made me think I might want to consider loosening that and allowing this, um, number one, I don't know if you saw the Laker Pioneer, but like, someone discovered this beautiful hand-painted wall sign on the, from the nineteen sixties pharmacy in Long Lake, um, that would not, we would not allow that, in, if I'm reading that right, and secondly, just the artist in me just feels like public art and like, the ability is different.
Now, if you want to go down that route, there's a whole section on mural kind of things.
Okay.
That covers that.
Okay.
And they have to be regulated differently because it's a whole thing.
Okay.
I'm happy to do it, I have the regulations, we do it in other places, those are considered, not that exactly the, the drug one is that, but other artistic ones are, you, because of the content problem.
I see.
We have to talk about them as murals, and there's a whole set of things, it's like a paragraph.
So if it's commercial, it's a sign?
Yes, and the, these are talking about those historic signs, typically, a painted sign doesn't come across or get maintained very well.
I see.
Over time, so that's why you usually don't allow them.
And if someone...
Now, you can, you guys could be different.
You remember Tom Plugs, you know, the Tom Plugs sign, you know, mural that he had painted across from Larson Printing?
I think I saw a picture one time and thought, oh, yeah, but we don't have, you don't currently have mural regulations in your code.
Well, I mean, I thought it was beautiful, and I'm with you, I love art and when I read that, but they discovered it.
I love hand-painted signs, but I don't like crappy hand-painted signs.
Exactly, and that's so subjective, how do you, how do you measure what looks good and what doesn't, it's really subjective.
I got an example, does that mean the American Legion sign is illegal?
Oh.
On the side of the building, that they just painted?
That's, I think it got repainted though, it's always been there.
But according to this, it would be illegal.
I think that's been there.
But it would be illegal under this code?
Yeah.
Illegal to do now, just to create now?
Moving forward.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd, I, I, I'm against heavy, heavy regulation, period, but when I look at a mural, or a, the Legion, you know, that's kind of what brings character to, to small communities, so I'd be against, you, you know, I think somebody, if they want to do that, would have to come before the planning commission and kind of describe what they want, and it is subjective, but where do you draw the line, I don't know, what, what would make your life easy with that?
So if we're inside, are you talking murals or...
Well, I'm talking what you brought up with the Legion.
So the murals, give me one second, and I'll have language, just opening it right now, that we already have done, uh, but I don't know about, the, the business signs is a different discussion, cause who else is involved?
And, and to me, it's right on the border, because if you're a commercial entity and an artist, and someone who loves creative things, then you can want to do commercial works on the side of your wall, and it would be a sign potentially, right, it might not be a mural, I don't know, or maybe you get creative and call it a mural if that's allowed.
How do we differentiate mural and graffiti, cause some graffiti is very artistic?
So this is, won't exactly work for you, just recognize that, that city has a certain process that they use, but I think some of the language is similar, um, you know, I'll read it, just cause I know you guys are at an angle.
What, what page is that on?
This is not, this is an example from another community that I have handy and I can access about murals, since we're talking about it.
Rita, is this in their code in the sign, or is it in a different section?
It is in the sign section.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I put it there.
So can you summarize it for us?
Sure, so it's the idea that they have to be in good repair, free from peeling paint damage, which we could also use in the general painted on buildings section, um, and then murals should be composed of permanent materials and applied only to permanent surfaces, they can't be applied to like a fabric or a temporary surface, so it's the idea that you're really trying to do something intentional, um, they allowed them only on building facades that face a side or a rear property line, so you can't do it facing the street, and then there's a bunch of things that you can't, that you don't want, you don't want moving parts added to it, you don't want projections, you don't want words that are inappropriate, et cetera, um, representations that imitate traffic, or warning, or safety things, and then, they particularly didn't want colors that are predominantly fluorescent, metallic, or reflective, I mean, you might like that too, but these are the ones that they landed on, they did a comprehensive mural plan, so, you know, that would be the idea that they would have, you would get approval of said mural before it was painted, and that probably is a good plan.
Yeah.
To do that, so it would go through and get an approval process, so, it's not very, a lot of stuff, but it does allow for it to happen, if it makes sense, you could use some of these for, if you were thinking it was okay to do a business sign, I just don't know, you know, those things are really cool, related to historic buildings, and that's how they communicated, I don't know, would you want to have that today, maybe?
I personally am a huge lover of hand-painted commercial signs, like when done really well, they're just phenomenal, um, and I would love to allow it.
You'd want?
I would love to allow it.
So, type, location signs, so since it is a hand-painted sign, we might be able to have it be something that you would approve, and you would have a permit for before they would do it, because it's the type of sign, it's definitely different than all the other signs, you're not, the thing is, you couldn't regulate the content.
True.
Right, so if someone wanted to make a sign for, a hand-painted sign for the, a certain shop that you don't really want them to have a sign, you wouldn't be able to say, no, you can't have them, cause we don't want that to be a big sign, um, you might want to have a regulation on the size of it, maybe, otherwise, they could do the whole side of a building with a commercial sign, would, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, that, that, if, potentially, if they're gonna do that, that...
Right, but if you don't have a regulation, you can't decide to say no after the fact, because you don't like the sign, those are the, that's where we're, that's where this is a tricky thing, where, yes, I'd like it, but the minute you don't like said sign, you don't really have a lot to foundationally say, you can't do that, so, that's, unfortunately, that's what regulations are about, is try to feel it, figure out what you can be comfortable with, and if you allow people lots of freedom, or if you want to restrain it a bit, because you aren't gonna like something.
Can you be as vague as, um, if you're considering painting a side of a building, it has to go through the approval process, and then, you know, with kind of a visual?
Yes, the challenge I still have is, you can't, you can't regulate the content of a sign, if it is a business sign, if we call that a business sign, we can't regulate the content, so if you don't like it, I don't, I mean, you could say no, I would think that it would have, this, I'm not a lawyer, so this would be something to ask the city attorney, I would think you don't have a lot of basis to saying no, if someone proposed it.
If it has deleterious language, you wouldn't want that up there.
If it, I mean, we could restrict those things, you know, inappropriate language, moving parts, beyond that, it's harder to regulate, cause it says specifically size, location, and type, I think we can regulate, you know, you need a permit for it, but I don't, I mean, again, I can talk to the city attorney, I just don't think that you can say, if you don't like it, once you see it, and you're like, ooh, that's ugly, you can't say no, cause that's regulating the content of the sign, that's you deciding that that's not appropriate content, and that's what the business wants, so...
I, I do not, I don't really mind the lack of regulation of the content, I do like the fact that if we were to permit it, it would be just less likely to be the type of person who would paint instead of buying a sign because of a cost reason only, um, so if they're willing to go through the effort to get a permit for something, it's more likely they're going to be putting more effort into it at least, right?
Yep.
And so, that's, strikes a good balance to me.
Okay, so can you include some language to cover this?
Definitely, so I hear mural or not, yes, mural, some version, and then also, uh, hand-painted signs, but it is a permit process, and it is considered a permanent sign, and those aren't going to be temporary, so, okay, any other elements that we didn't include that you think we should?
No more questions for Rita, no more comments?
So the next time, in theory, the next time you see it, um, will be the language, the public hearings at the council, isn't it?
Sorry, um, this isn't zoning, so it's not a public hearing.
So we don't have to do it?
No, but it, but the next time you would see it would be at the council, we have to post it, tendees.
Well, are we gonna come back with language here?
I think we should.
Okay.
And with the corrected language from the last meeting?
Yeah, we can do strikeout on the line, yeah.
I can, his was just, it was in wrong alphabetical order, and there was, yeah.
Standards.
Yeah. I think we can bring it back to the next meeting.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's generally in good shape, we can add that and work through the, the rest of the language, so, all right.
Okay, any other comments for Rita?
I need to just bow.
Hearing not. We are now moving on to planning commission terms, Sarah.
Uh, we have two vacancies, and we have, uh, a couple of commissioners that are seeking reappointment, we have advertised for candidates, that closes on Friday, and we have one candidate so far, so folks have interest, that know folks, let us know, uh, interviews will be held in conjunction, surprise me if you notice, for the joint meeting.
Thank you.
Um, at our, at our meeting on the third of December, and traditionally, the members of the council are invited to attend that meeting, to sit in and, and listen, um, that's all I know for now.
Got a question on that?
Yeah.
So I don't think in our work rules, we talk about, if there's two open spots and we have only one person apply.
We don't.
Do we have, do we open that back up in like three months or something for more people?
We can, or we can, um, our, our work rules do say that even if we're a body short.
Yeah.
Our quorum is going to be whatever that current amount is.
But I think the way the work rules are written right now, we wouldn't open it back up until the fall again, right?
I don't know, if, if we have a vacancy, I think we would, we could do it again.
But the vacancy, it's a spot that's never been filled, it was vacant, we wouldn't have...
It's still, it's still a vacant spot, though.
Okay.
Can I, is it legal to ask who's not re...
I think we brought it up in the last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was not the last meeting, okay.
And then Jake, right?
Yeah. So Jake and...
I'm saying.
Mrs. Sastrom.
Oh, really? Oh, well, gee whiz, thank you for, we've learned a lot.
He's gonna be our neighbor.
Yeah, I'm motivated, otherwise I'd stay on, but relieving mountains, so...
Yeah, Mr. Sastrom's, uh, job, uh, schedule is taking a lot of time, so, and then the other members have, are seeking reappointment.
Okay, questions on this?
We'll, we'll see, I don't know, I mean, I would think we would maybe want to re-advertise maybe again, we'll talk with the city manager about it.
Do we send it out to people who previously applied and didn't get in?
We haven't.
Hmm, that's a good idea, though, to do that.
Just send a note that said, like if you were to send it to all the people that applied in the last like five years, just said, hey, just so you know?
Hey there.
There's a position, the spot's opening back up.
If you're interested.
If you wanna reapply.
And Sarah, when, when is, pardon me, I think you said this already, but when are the?
Friday.
There, do this Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Further comments? Moving on, meeting start time and possible change.
Members may recall, a handful of months ago, we talked a little bit about this, but the council earlier this year, I, I think in April, they changed their meeting time from seven o'clock start time to a six o'clock start time. And the planning commission talked about it as well and they asked that we revisit it after a couple of months have gone by. And so we had it on our agenda last month, but we were, we had a couple of members not with us, so we tabled it to tonight's meeting. So the one thing that would be helpful is if the planning commission is, is thinking they would like to change their time, it would be good to do so and then we'll make that change in the work rules as well. But then we can also share that information with the interested candidates for the planning commission as part of interviews. But again, that's up to members of the planning commission. I would say for the most part, it, it's gone pretty well for the council, Ms. McInney.
It's gone really well. And I, I really think since we made the change, we've had a bigger audience too.
Hmm, interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think last month, we were leaning towards moving to the same thing at six, but wanted to have more people here to make sure there was no conflicts.
And I think I just saw, did I see Doc's commission changed to six o'clock?
Yeah, I think they're looking to, I think we're gonna bring it back to parks as well.
Okay, let's open this subject up to discussion.
And I think if I remember right, it was me who recommended we table it till now and it was because I, I liked the, I liked the idea of shifting at the end of terms so that people who had committed to seven o'clock could keep it. And I personally am fine with either one, so.
It was Mr. Sastrom who had the conflict.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
He was the one most vocal in expressing that the six o'clock would be changed.
And I said we would do it, propose doing it at startup next year.
Oh, Jan 1.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion?
Well, it doesn't matter to me, but I think it'd be great for the staff. Makes a little shorter day for them.
Yeah. And it syncs up with other ones that are working.
I think they brought that up also.
Only if yours is church on Tuesday at six. That's okay. It's only one, one Tuesday a month.
Further comments? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion regarding start time of planning commission meetings.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to change the start time to six o'clock to correspond to same with city council starting January 18. January.
Starting with the January meeting.
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. Motion carries. Council liaison, Kath, any comments?
We did, I'm not sure if everybody listened where, but we took submissions for citizen of the year awards. Yeah, it was, we had several submissions and we did decide on choosing Mary Privix, who is one of the main coordinators for Farmer's Market, and she's been doing it for about 14 years. She and her other coordinators. And she's getting close to retirement. She's getting close to 80. So we thought it would be a great time to acknowledge her. And the person who sent in the, the application wrote up a really nice, so I think we'll be giving her her certificate, I believe at the next meeting, maybe next week. So it's a new thing and so next year, everybody keep that in mind. Submissions, I think they had two months to come up with who they chose. We had several really good applic- All of them were worthy. So we feel really good about it. And then the only other thing is, as you know, it's this weekend, Saturday, is the tree lighting from five to seven.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if anyone else knows too, but Jay Soul, the owner of Allen Almas passed away.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I heard, yeah.
So he was a big supporter of everything around.
Everything.
Yeah.
He'd been that one that, for a while. It was really sad.
They, he came here when they did their patio, right?
Yeah, as part of the approval. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's a nice patio too.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That's really sad. Big loss to the community.
Okay. Sarah, comments from staff?
Nothing from me. I was gonna mention tree lighting, but as Ms. McInney said, that's on Saturday, five to seven. I don't know what the weather's gonna be, but you know.
Well, it's gonna be chilly, but not very windy.
But it'll be festive. We're busy. We, the three ordinances, ADU, solar, and electric vehicle chargers, all were passed at the council a meeting or two ago and are in the process of getting into the books. I believe they've been published. We've been working on signage, lots of, still ongoing, lots of permitting applications, which has been keeping us very, very busy and on our toes. And, and obviously elections were very busy in our office with all hands on deck and the election team did a really, really good job.
Yeah, you did a great job.
You really did.
All of them did, yeah.
All of them did.
Thank you.
And so it, it, it actually feels quiet. And I won't say that in a bad way, but it, our, our place was popular for about the past six, eight weeks. So lots of, lots of clients, so.
I voted early. It was a smooth, smooth process.
It's the first time I ever did.
Same here.
The team did a really good job. Maggie and-
The staff was so-
Kevin and all the volunteers, our new Sarah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good to hear. They really did.
Even when there were some pretty obstinate people there, which there was one in front of me and they dealt with them pretty well.
Well, that's good to hear.
It's nice to hear.
Thank you. And thank you everybody for joining us this evening too. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Tuesday, December 3 at 7:00 p.m. Do we have anything else to bring up?
December 3.
Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I tried. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, everyone.
We have a motion, second discussion. Hearing none. All of you in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thank you for coming.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Oh, yeah. Happy Thanksgiving.